All right, thanks Jim. My name is Paul Teddley Ferry. I'm the Chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals. It is January twenty fourth, twenty 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 three and past the hour at seven o'clock. This open meeting of the zoning board of appeals is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Payers executive order of June sixteen, twenty twenty one, an act relative to extending certain COVID nineteen measures adopted during the state of emergency. All members of the zoning board of appeals are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order allows the zoning appeals to meet entirely remotely. So long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the chair notes otherwise. Member of the members of the public who wish to view the live stream of this meeting may do so by going to Northborough remote meetings on YouTube via the link listed on the agenda. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comments. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Mark Wu-Tang.
Hi.
Fran Backstrom.
Hi.
Brad Blanchett.
Hi.
Jeff Leland.
Hi.
Jeff Grabowski.
Hi.
Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Lori Connors.
Yeah.
Robert Federico.
Here.
And Fred Litchfield.
Here.
Okay, so just some ground rules real quick. I will invite each speaker or applicant on the agenda by name to make the presentation and speak up to the application. Participants will provide their full name and hold until their name is called. Each speaker will be asked to mute their phone or computer when not speaking and to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate meeting minutes. Those responding will be asked to wait until the floor is yielded to them by the chair. Speakers who wish to respond to the comments of others can do so through the chair. Taking care to identify themselves. Each vote taken by the Board of Committee will be conducted by roll call vote. For for the public, if you're dialing in by phone, please dial star nine to raise your hand and wait to be recognized by the chair. Please note that part of your phone number will be visible for those viewing the meeting. By Zoom, please click raise hand on the bottom of your screen and wait to be recognized by the chair. The chair will ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once the chair has a list of all public commentators, the chair will call on each by name and afford three minutes for any comments. All right. So first up on the agenda, so just for just right before we start, so Suzie will not be attending tonight's meeting. So we are going to split the two Jess for the two cases that we have today. For the first case, Jeff Leland will be the voting member. So the first item on the agenda is to consider the petition of Cassinia Malova Flores for a special permit in the groundwater protection overlay district for operation of a day spa on the property located at twenty seven South Street, Unit Three, MAP sixty three, parcel one seventy three in the downtown business zoning district and groundwater protection overlay district area three. And I believe we have Tom Riordan and Cassinia. All right, and I will be changing your role to a panelist. Okay, Mr. Riordan and Ms. Flores. Can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay.
Hi.
Hi, how's it going? All right. So if you could just kind of give us a brief overview on why you are in front of the zoning board of appeals. And just an overview of your case.
So, good evening. Thank you for hearing our case. My name is Tom Riordan. I'm from Riordan Company. And I'm representing Cassinia Flores regarding the opening of a new day spa at twenty seven South Street. The unit three is about six hundred forty eight square feet. There are six units on this site. And the there are no proposed changes to the building structure, the layout of the suite or to the exterior site conditions. The extent of the change is a new tenant. Tenant being Ms. Flores's day spa. The reason we are before you is because there are some chemicals used in the operation of the spa which have been deemed as potentially hazardous to groundwater. So we presented the list to Fred Litchfield, a town engineer, which he reviewed with us. We identified thirteen with the quantity of about a half a gallon. And the recommendation is that we store these chemicals in a suitable cabinet that has a excess storage capacity if there was any spills. So we're before you because of the special permit required because of the potential hazard of the chemicals used in the day spa. We have appeared before the groundwater committee and they've reviewed the list of chemicals and we have submitted all the documentation they have requested. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. Fred, do you have any additional information to add?
No, everything that Mr. Riordan stated is true. I've met with them. The groundwater advisory committee did make a recommendation along with some facts and conditions if you want them. I put them together in a letter and forwarded it to you on January nineteenth. Hopefully you all have that. The only thing that was missing at the time that I wrote the letter was the floor plan indicating exactly where the containment cabinet would be stored, but that was forwarded to me later that night or the next day, and it has been forwarded to Lori for inclusion in the decision. I can go over the items one by one, or we can waive that if you are if you all have the application.
I guess, looking at the letter now, I mean, is there anything that should be that is of concern for you in terms of the the chemicals that are listed on exhibit A?
No, no, it's um I have to admit, it's somewhat ironic that a day spa would have chemicals that would be considered potentially toxic or hazardous. However, the requirement that we have is that applicants submit the material safety data sheets for all products that they're going to have on site, and then those are reviewed to see if there's any potential hazard or concern about what would happen if they were to be spilled. And any any item that's listed as hazardous or recommends prevention from entering a septic or sewer or open waterway is then flagged as something that needs to be in a containment, and that's where the list of thirteen items that you have before you falls. They're all products that are applied to a person's body during the process of whatever goes on at the spa. And it's they're agreeable to put it in a cabinet, and that seems like enough safety precaution for the groundwater committee to recommend approval of the project with the conditions outlined in the letter. So there's nothing of concern.
Okay. And is this property on town sewer?
Um. I believe it is.
Okay, and obviously all of the activities for this day spa will occur within sort of the floor plan of the apartment.
Yes, there's a they they purchased one unit. It's a condominiumized building. They've purchased one of the units and they have control of that one unit under their ownership. The concern is if anything were to spill into the drainage system that could go into the parking lot and or into a floor drain or something within the building that's not tied to the sewer, there would be a concern. So but the cabinet takes care of all that.
Are there any questions from the board? Mark?
Yeah, Fred, is there anything in these chemicals that would be a problem going into the town sewer? Is there any reservation on that? In the quantities that are presented here?
Well, the quantities are pretty minimal. Yeah, I I don't not qualified to say a gallon of this is more is so much more hazardous than an ounce of this. So we just go by what the MSDS sheet says. If it says prevent from entering the sewer, I flag it, ask them to put it in a cabinet. We're pretty concerned that the volume that they have being less than a half a gallon is minimal risk. Now, it's a new business and Ms. Flores indicated that she was hoped to expand in the future, and so the groundwater advisory committee recommended that they have a cabinet that's larger than what they need in the event that they need more volume of the chemicals that are on the list. So that they could expand their business without having to come back. But they only allowed, you know, up to four gallons of cabinet storage, so it's not a although it's a huge increase over a half a gallon, it's not a it doesn't rise to a level of extreme concern. So they wanted to give her the flexibility to work her business, expand it if the things are going well and not have to come back constantly if she wanted to add another half a gallon or another another gallon, but put a limit on it of, I think it was four gallons, what they said. And and that seemed appropriate to to the applicant. And so it was agreed that we would recommend up to, I think, four gallons is what I put in there, and that is the cabinet that they have specified that they will use. There is a condition that they recommended according to the bylaw that they would have to demonstrate on an annual basis to the building department and the Board of Health that they are in compliance with all the state and local regulations. This special permit, if granted, would be something that they need to verify they're in compliance with.
Mark, oh, sorry. Mark, did you have a follow up or?
Well, just a few further questions on the whole. How many employees will be here? If I can ask the applicant?
Hi, it would be just me.
Okay, and how many people at a time? I mean, is there enough parking here for what you anticipate?
Well, if I could address parking, even though it's not within the scope of the our special permit, there are currently nineteen spaces on site. And I did a breakdown of the services and office spaces. And with the proposed change in use, we have nineteen required and we have nineteen provided.
Okay. Thank you.
No further. Thanks, Mark. Laura, I think, did you have your hand up earlier or?
Um, yeah, I just wanted just to ask for a clarification from Fred. So your letter had mentioned a maximum capacity containment capacity of two point five gallons. Is that possibly a typo and it should be four gallons?
No, I misspoke and it should be two point five.
Okay.
Because the cabinet that they've agreed to install, when you measure the volume of the base of the cabinet multiplied by the height that's below the first shelf, it's approximately two and a half gallons. So as as long as they have the one cabinet, two and a half gallons, and they don't go over that, then they should be fine.
Thank you.
Okay. I think at the groundwater advisory committee.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, if I may, Fran has her hand up.
Oh, sorry. Fred, I didn't see you.
No worries. Sometimes the yellow hand blends in with my balls. But thank you. So I just have a question on on the cabinet because the location of it was not known at the time of the letter on the nineteenth. We do have that in writing to go into the as-built plan. So they know where it's going to be located?
Uh, yes, I think I could pull it up if you need to see it, but it is part of it was submitted. It's in the documentation. It's a floor plan with a little asterisk as to where the cabinet will be located within the building.
And then just a follow up on the chemicals. This is no different than any other day spa or nail salon. I mean, we're not talking about hazmat suits. It's just pretty standard in the industry.
Yes, that's my understanding. I'm not an expert when it comes to skincare. But if you look down the list, it's pretty much what you might find at a Bielene's store Macy's or whatever. I don't think there's anything here that's unique.
Bielene, you're dating yourself, Fred.
That happens every once in a while. Sorry.
All right, thanks, Fred. So I guess, are there any floor drains in this condo or no? Yep, Tom.
I don't believe so. It was used as a commercial office space. And most of these products are topically applied and then wiped off, so there's no floor drains that I'm aware of.
Okay. And then I think at the groundwater advisory committee meeting that you guys had a couple of weeks ago, there was a question about like towels and stuff. Are you are you still planning to use disposable towels?
Yes.
Okay. Does anyone else from staff? Brad? You have your hand up?
Yeah, just basic blocking and tackling questions, if you will, Mr. Chair. Hours of operation and signage. Could you please dive into those for me, please?
Well, Casino could address the the hours of operation.
Uh, day spa will be regular business hours and more on Saturday in a in the evening. And this is the most the evenings and a Saturdays most the busiest time. And it also will help with the parking because everybody else who works the regular office hours will be gone by then.
Would you mind giving like an hour timeframe, like nine to six, ten to eight?
Yes, about ten to six.
And that's is that Monday through Friday?
I'm still thinking about the days, but I believe it would be Tuesday to through Saturday.
Ten to six, okay. Tuesday through Saturday, okay. And then how about signage? What are you considering for signage to?
I, yeah. There's a stand with the signages for other businesses in this building. And we were planning on doing the same thing, so match whatever they have over there.
So if I could address signage, anything that is proposed would be reviewed by Mr. Federico and make sure it complies with the signed bylaws. But if they have a directory, we will probably fill a slot on the existing directory.
Okay, thank you.
If I may, Mr. Chairman. In terms of signage, Cassania, a couple of things to keep in mind. Any kind of signage will require a permit, so have the sign company apply for a permit. If you have, if there are any banners, they also need a permit and they are restricted in size to fifteen square feet. Also, in other towns, you see these tall, skinny, they look like a flag or a pin feather or sail. Before you spend your money on those, just know that they're not allowed in Northborough. I know they're expensive and I know a lot of businesses aren't aware that they're not allowed and they're expensive, so just don't bother buying one of those because I'm going to have to ask you to take it down if you install it.
Okay.
All right, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, are there any other board members or staff that has any questions or comments? All right, this is a public hearing. If you are on your phone, please dial star nine. And if you are in the audience on a on the Zoom call, please click on the raise hand icon. We will call on you. All right, I don't see anyone that is raising their hand or trying to dial in at this point. Mark, yes?
I move that we close the hearing.
Second.
Mark moved that we close the hearing. Jeff Leland seconded. All right, roll call vote. Mark?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Fran?
Hi.
Brad?
Hi.
And I'm as well. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Flores and Mr. Riordan. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next up on the agenda, and for this one, Jeff Grabowski will be the voting member. The next item on the agenda is to consider the petition for Artemis Veterinary LLC for a special permit, special permit with site plan approval, special permit in the groundwater protection overlay district for operation of a veterinary clinic on the property located at three eighteen Main Street, Suites one seventy and one seventy five, MAP forty seven, parcel ninety three in the Business East zoning district and groundwater protection overlay district area three. And for this hearing, I believe we have Mr. Flood. And then there are two Artemis which I will add. Hi. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, great. So if you want to just give us an overview as to why you are in front of this board?
So my name is Christopher Flood. I'm an attorney from Marlboro. And at the on the screen with us is also Dr. Karen Patty. And Dr. Patty Patty is a doctor of veterinary medicine. She currently has her veterinary practice as a mobile clinic. I would like to change to a brick and mortar and more traditional veterinary clinic. We seeking a special permit to operate at three eighteen Main Street, which is, you might know, is the commercial building that has a restaurant in the front and some retail on both sides and offices on the second floor. She's going to be on the west side of the building where there was a former daycare operating in the out of those two units. There's commercial properties on both sides of that building, commercial properties across the street. And I understand there's some residential property behind that is divided by a berm as well as some trees. We're guessing that probably happened when the building was originally built as part of those conditions. We don't expect there should be no outside changes at all to this building. All of her clinic and all of the changes that will happen will be inside. And all of the operation of the business will be inside with one small exception. In the event any of the animals need to be relieved themselves, there is an area behind the building that's not visible from the street or the sides that used to be in the daycare facility playground. They're going to convert that into an area where in the event one of the pets needs to be to relieve itself, they'll escort it out. It'll be supervised. And we don't think it'll even be seen by anybody, neighbors, or even some of the other tenants. Dr. Patty expects about fifteen to twenty patients per day. This will be spread over the course of the entire business day. There'll be one doctor and three to four employees who will be working at this veterinary clinic. So there's a lot of parking on the side of this building. And we think we'll be even less than what was used for the daycare facility because we're going to spread it out over a longer period of time. But we don't anticipate any issues with parking. I'm not aware that there's any designated specific identified spots. It's more open parking. We have met with the groundwater advisory committee and had several meetings with Mr. Litchfield. He's identified all of the chemicals that Dr. Patty will be using in her practice. And I think has put them into certain categories, and she's agreed that she's going to buy the necessary cabinets in order to be able to store any of the products or chemicals that she uses in the veterinary practice so that they won't in any way end up in the drains or the groundwater. We do know that this property has a septic system that was recently enlarged. And as part of our process, we provided Mr. Litchfield with, I guess it's called the not sure the words are it, but it's how much use will be added to the septic system by the veterinary clinic versus what was there before. We provided whom the chart, and I apologize if I get the name of that chart. So now we're asking you to approve this special permit and we'll happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. Fred, do you have any additional comments?
Uh, no, just that I can confirm there. Everything Attorney Flood said is correct. We have had several meetings along with a meeting with the groundwater advisory committee and then a follow up meeting after that to review the list of chemicals and try to put them into appropriate storage places within the building. The I do have a letter that I sent to you on January nineteenth. After that, the one thing that was of concern was the applicant needs to use distilled water for part of their business. And the MSDS sheet, believe it or not, indicates that that should not be allowed to go into the drain, a ditch or a waterway. So and it's one of the higher volumes of chemicals of products that she needs to store. And the cabinets get expensive the larger that they get. Unfortunately, it doesn't. The only way I can kind of draw the line is when it says prevent from release into a drain or a waterway, that's what triggers the cabinet requirement in my mind. We would hope that we might be able to find a different product. She had sent me an email just an hour or so ago indicating that there she thought there was a difference between that product and another one, but unfortunately, that MSDS sheet says the same thing. She did ask to substitute tied liquid tied pods, the solid little solid blocks that you get to put in the washing machine instead of tied liquid. And that is fine by me because it's not a liquid, it can't spill. And so that also contains about eight liters. And so she wanted to revise the list that I had sent with my letter to all of you. I just wanted to ask her. I sent an email to her after I got the email this evening, but I didn't get a response back. So if we could just ask her why that list was only revised to go from let me get I get my numbers right here. It was a total of thirty two point four liters in the pharmacy. But when you submitted it, you only brought it down to thirty one point four. You didn't drop it by eight liters. And I was wondering was there something else on the list that I missed that you changed or just a math error?
My apologies. I am I I merely updated the spreadsheet with the contents, but I didn't update the these. My apologies for that.
No, 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 no problem. The the so the thirty two point four liters that was on the letter that I had sent to you should actually be twenty four point four. And the cabinet that she's proposing in the pharmacy, she actually has a pretty sizable floor area and has different uses for different products. So some are in a lockbox which is locked and only the doctor on site has access to, and some are in a containment cabinet in the surgery area. And some are in the pharmacy in a containment cabinet that's larger and there's more product in there. And the cabinets that she's indicated she would like to use are adequate to store everything that she has plus some additional capacity. So what she's presented is is perfectly fine and adequate. And the list that she sent me today just eliminates the tied liquid from the list, and I will get that to Lori to include as a part of the final decision if the ZBA is in agreement with that. Like the previous application, there's a request for a condition that requires annual notification to the building and Board of Health departments for conformance with all state, local and federal regulations. And that includes any conditions that are put in this special permit to make sure that nothing else is being stored there, and it's all being stored in the approved manner. else is being stored there and it's all being stored in the approved manner. So everything else is in the letter, no issues. The groundwater committee was, was, um, happy to see that it was so well laid out and organized.
Thanks, Fred. Um, so I just have a quick question on the, uh, septic system gallonage chart. So you list approximately two hundred and fifty gallons going into the septic. Is that, um, includes sort of any laundry that you're proposing to do throughout the day or is that?
Yes.
Yep, okay. And then I guess a question for Fred. So is there only one sort of secure lockbox in the property?
Yes, that's my understanding and that's for, uh, very small but lethal doses of medicine for final stage treatment.
Okay. And then obviously the, the surgery area, pharmacy area, um, those are just containment, um, storage cabinets. Okay.
Those are the kind that we generally talk about where there's a shelf in there and then there's containment volume below the bottom shelf. So if anything inside the cabinet leaks, it's captured and can be removed off, off-site. Uh, they're very secure, they're flammable, uh, flame, flammable resistant, something like that. Anyway, flame retardant, so.
Alright, thanks. And then obviously, um, this will just be operating normal business hours. Um, there will be no plans for overnight stays from any of the patients. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Uh, does anyone from the board or anyone, actually, anyone from staff, any, any other additional comments or questions?
Uh, could you specify the hours of operation?
Yeah, typical hours of operation will be approximately nine to five, Monday through Friday and eight to four on Saturdays. Excuse me, eight to noon on Saturdays, my apologies.
Okay, uh, Mark?
Is your practice limited to, um, what I'll describe as car animals? Or do you have horses, anything large that would be trailered in?
Oh, that's, that's a great question. No, it's all going to be companion animals, which is cats, dogs and pocket pets.
Right, okay.
Jeff Grabowski.
Yeah, just a, uh, question for you, Dr. Patty or Attorney Flood. Are there any floor drains in, uh, the unit?
There have been no floor drains proposed in the, um, site plan now.
Okay, and I was hoping you could describe a little bit more about the outdoor area where the pets can go use the bathroom. Where exactly is that located?
So it's located on the property, um, directly behind the restaurant tavern. Right, uh, currently it's used as an outdoor play facility for the daycare kids. So it's a nice little grassed area that is completely fenced off with a gate. And it's kind of hidden behind the building, so you can't see it from the street, which is probably a very good idea for small children. Um, so that will be, that will be the, what we call elimination station.
Okay, thanks. I guess, uh, just to follow up on that, so will you have like a trash receptacle located there for any sort of waste? Or will you bring that inside and throw it, throw it away?
Yeah, I, I don't like to store waste outside. Um, I, I, it, it will be brought in and, and thrown in the typical refuse, just like we do at home. Yeah. Especially in weather like this. Nobody wants to store it outside.
Are there any other questions from from the board? Nope, alright, um, this is a public meeting. Uh, if you are calling in by phone, please press star nine, or if you are on Zoom, please click the raise hand icon on your screen. Okay, I don't see anyone that is, has their hand raised. Are there any other questions or Mark?
Chair, I would like to, uh, close this hearing, make, make a motion to close the hearing.
Alright, uh, Brad made a motion to close the hearing and Mark seconded the hearing, uh, seconded the motion. Uh, we'll have roll call vote. Uh, Brad?
I.
Mark?
I.
Fran?
I.
Uh, Jeff Grabowski?
I.
Uh, and I'm an I as well. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you guys.
Thank you. I assume we're dismissed.
Yes. Yeah, we'll have a decision shortly. Thank you. Okay. Does anyone want to go first? Mark, you look like you're ready. Uh, we can, so I guess we can start with three eighteen Main Street if you want, if that's easier.
I figure we'll start with twenty-seven.
That's fine.
Yeah, um, yes, it looks like what she's doing is, um, perfectly reasonable. Pro- perfectly appropriate for the site. It's, you know, other office usage. Uh, she has taken consideration of the fact that when the bulk of her clientele might arrive, that the other offices will be clearing out. They tend to be more professional offices, so I think that fits well. Um, I don't, you know, I hesitate to think that, uh, most of the cabinets in our homes have more chemicals than she'll be holding in hers. So, uh, I, I just, yeah, I think this is an appropriate use to this building and I see no reason not to approve of it.
Uh, Jeff?
I would agree with Mark completely. This is my area. I know the street, the unit. There are other businesses, medical business to one side, dental office to the other. Um, I think her hours are going to fit in very well. I see no, no negativity to the proposed, uh, use at all. And it is sewer and water, so the limit, you know, very little likelihood of any, uh, groundwater damage.
Uh, Brad?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think this is a good fit for the area. Um, and my only concern, I think Fran, you had asked that, uh, is the chemicals stored, are they any different from, um, similar businesses like, you know, at filings? And so that's fine. The only condition I would make though is just kind of hold them to the hours, give or take an hour or two. That's my only feedback though. And that's why I asked it, but as far as the hours of operation. And I think she said Tuesday to Saturday, ten to six. I mean, obviously give her a little leeway, but I'd like to have some sort of condition there as far as, far as hours of operation.
Okay. What, what would you consider to be like eight to eight or nine to seven?
Yeah, eight to eight, yep. Yeah, I mean, we don't, let's not get super stringent on this, but yeah, eight to eight, that's totally fine.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I guess I, I would, I would agree. I don't really see that there's really an impact to groundwater. Everything's going to be taking place inside. There's no floor drains in the establishment. Most of the stuff that is on the list, um, doesn't seem like it's toxic considering that's going to be going on people's faces and stuff. Um, so I don't really, uh, and it's on town service as well, so. Yeah, Jeff, Cleveland?
So, not to be argumentative with Brad, however, um, as someone who in my practice and my, uh, my former partner could work anywhere from six in the morning till midnight, seven days a week. I think the majority of the businesses on the street are probably working eight to six or seven. But there are accountants that work late in Saturdays and Sundays. There's a massage, uh, therapy business that goes eight to, I, I think it's ten to eight, seven days a week. I, I would not be, uh, I would not really like to see a, a time limitation only because I don't think that especially with the type of business she has and the fact that most of the people there and the biggest problem is going to be with parking. Those are going to be those normal eight to six or eight to seven hours. Any weekend time or more evening times is going to be the, the lower trafficked area. And there are not that many, uh, living units other than some of my family members on this side of the street. So that's just my, my feeling.
Yeah, no, I mean, Jeff, that's a great point. I mean, I'm not married to eight to eight, but I would like to have some sort of parameters. I mean, obviously we can go wider than that, but it's just my feedback. If everyone else disagrees, then so be it. But I'm, I'm not, it's not going to get in the way of me approving, uh, the special permit.
Right.
Thank you. Um, well, I feel like I might be the only person that's ever gone to a day spa. Um, but even though it says day, I mean, certainly after working hours are important. If it's something, if it's a luxury you afford yourself and you're a full-time working person. So I'd be a little concerned with limiting night hours, though I've never gone to, you know, and had a facial at ten o'clock at night either. But, um, I, I would, if we don't have to put on time limits, I, I, I would, I guess I would leave them off and let her establish the business if it becomes a nuisance. I guess that would be something that would be brought up. But we really do want the business to be open off-hours, not earlier in the morning. But again, I don't know what her, you know, if she's new to the business world or just new to Northborough. I didn't, um, get, you know, that sense. But if we don't have to have restrictions on hours, I would not.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not, I'm not married to that. Uh, actually, um, Bob, a- as far as other similar businesses. Um, I mean, what are their hours of operation?
Uh, the other hours of operation, we don't really track. Uh, but, but they are kind of up to the discretion of the business owner. Uh, like, like Jeff said earlier, um, you get some people that have, you know, they, they work all hours of the day or night. You know, I'm, I'm, I'm not even, I, I, I really don't have a whole lot of comment about it. There's not a lot of restrictions that I've seen. Um, I think the biggest restriction I've seen lately is, you know, signs can't be lit from midnight to six. And in, in terms of hours of operation, I, I, I don't have anything that requires, um, anything, uh, any restrictions either. But I, but I do think that, you know, if, if she's willing to work with the property owner and the other tenants to, you know, stagger hours. So if the parking isn't quite as choked up, uh, that would, I think that would be a great thing.
Uh, Lori?
I emailed you folks a, um, draft decision on Friday. And I had some, uh, conditions of approval. Many of these were derived from Fred's, uh, letter, uh, recommendations from the groundwater advisory committee. But I was wondering if you folks had the opportunity to look over those draft conditions and are you okay with them?
Based on this, Lori, I bet, uh, we haven't, I'll, I'll speak for myself. I have not seen this, so.
Oh, you haven't seen it?
No, no, I apologize.
Right, um, I can either go through them one by one or I, if you give me a minute, I can, uh, hopefully pull them up. Pull up the draft.
Okay, I have it in front of me, Lori. It, it does, it, the conditions, um, for approval would be directly related to the, the groundwater recommendations through Fred about the storing of the chemicals, the volume of the chemicals. The inability to put them in a sewer or drain system. The as-built floor plan has to be reviewed by town engineer. And then on an annual basis, they'll demonstrate to the building department and board of health that everything chemically toxic will be stored as we told them to. But that was, I think that was the only conditions who are all directly related to the chemicals. Which makes me a little nervous about having a facial in next week.
That's correct.
Yeah, I mean, I guess what I would say about the hours is, um, to sort of some of the other members, Jeff's points specifically. Uh, I don't, I mean, I feel like this part of town is a downtown neighborhood. It's not really surrounded by residential properties. There's other businesses that surround it. Um, if she works till eight or nine or ten PM and people want to get facials at that time, um, I don't really see an issue with that. I mean, our, the focus for us with this case was the groundwater. Um, it doesn't seem like she's going to be storing that much in terms of chemicals. Um, and the stuff that is going to be stored is going to be in a containment cabinet. So, um, I don't really have an issue with not putting, uh, hour restrictions on her business.
Yeah, I mean, Mr. Chair, like I said, um, it's not going to get in the way of, of my vote. It was just, uh, something I was throwing out there, so.
And I guess.
Well, you think I'm in favor. Uh, no, I, I know I'm in favor of this, uh, decision.
Okay, and then I guess to, uh, Lori, to, to your, um, just comment. I mean, you basically are, are just documenting what Fred had put in his letter, which I think at least for me, you know, I do want to see the, the check on the annual basis, even though it's a very simple check. Um, you know, the, the storing of it in the, the cabinet and that, you know, specifying exactly what it is. And then, you know, um, I, I would say the only thing is, um, is the so in your, your, your decision one A, where you say the total, uh, contains a total of approximately a half a gallon. Um, is that going to be, I mean, should we change that to maybe two and a half just to give them some leeway in terms of, uh, you know, if the business does expand, right? Because I think Fred, you had said that the initial list quickly from Roger was a half a gallon. But that the containment could go up to two and a half, so maybe we just keep it at a condition as, as two and a half so that if she does grow and she has more customers, we, she doesn't have to come back in front of us for an extra gallon of whatever they put on moisturizer or something, I don't know.
Um, condition B does allow an expansion in the volume of chemicals. Uh, so it says that applicants' volumes of the chemicals listed in Exhibit A may increase as the business expands, provided all chemicals listed in Exhibit A are stored within this cabinet. The increased, uh, volume shall be allowed, so that would be the capacity of two point five gallons. So that letter A refers to the, um, quantities that were provided in Exhibit A. So it's just a total of all of the quantities that she said that she would need currently.
Okay. That's fine. I mean, as long as we all interpret it the same as that, if the grows, she can add up to two and a half gallons or based, basically what that storage containment does have, then I don't really see a problem with it. Um, I don't know if anyone else has any other comments? Or any other, are there any other additional, um, uh, conditions that they would like in addition to what, uh, is on Lori's decision? Okay, I'll take that as a no, Mark. Uh, Jeff, Cleveland?
No, no conditions. I was just going to make a stab at a motion here.
Um, if I could interrupt you for a moment, uh, because they are actually requesting a waiver. So if you could act on the waiver first, uh, so the waiver would be that they have requested is from zoning bylaws, section zero seven dash zero seven dash zero one zero. Uh, paragraph D, subsection four, subsection A, subsection Uh, paragraph D subsection four, subsection A, subsection five. So this is a waiver of the requirement to submit an analysis by a technically. Qualified expert certifying that the quality and supply of the underlying groundwater resources. Will not be degraded to the point whereby a hazard to public health or ecological damage results.
I'm sorry, Lori, can you repeat the the uh?
Oh, you could just say so moved.
I'll try that.
I'll second the move to motion.
Uh, so we have a a motion by Jeff. Via Lori and seconded by Mark. And this is, Lori, is this just for the waiver?
Yeah.
It's just for the waiver, yes.
Okay.
And then, Mr. Chair, um, before we vote, is this a standard? Um, scenario where we would waive? Um, this technical analysis, is that like a a heavy hand for something so small when we're talking about uh what a sewer system?
That's what I think, and I'm sure Fred would be happy to speak to it. This, you're gonna see this waiver again for the next application.
It it's a requirement that any special permit include a list of five things. The analysis by a technically qualified expert is one of those things that's required for the application. Um, no changes to the outside of the building or the inside of the building. And the fact that they've got such small volumes, uh, the groundwater committee was willing to recommend approval of this waiver. It makes sense.
Okay, so we we have a motion uh by Jeff, seconded by Mark for um this uh waiver. Um, Jeff.
I.
Uh, Mark?
I.
Uh, Fran?
Hi.
Brad?
Hi.
Uh, and I'm an I as well. Okay, um, so now I guess we still need to go through a motion to. Uh, or need to have a motion to approve the uh special permit.
Fire away, Jeff.
All right, I'll give it a shot, Mark. Uh, make a motion to grant a special permit for groundwater protection overlay district. Uh, to allow the use of a day spa on the property located at twenty seven Cell Street, Unit Three. Within the groundwater protection overlay district area three with the conditions. In the draft decision and from the groundwater. Committee.
So Jeff made a motion, uh, Fran seconded. Uh, is there any other further discussion? Okay, um, Jeff?
I.
Fran?
I.
Uh, Brad?
I.
Mark?
I.
And I'm an I as well. Okay. Okay, um. Three eighteen Main Street. Artemis veterinary. Do you want to go first?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yep, Greg.
Um, so when I first saw this application, the first thing I thought of was. Um, how is this going to um be in harmony with the daycare? And where are the animals going to relieve themselves? So. I I give the applicant credit for being thorough with the application and reading through the application. Uh, realizing they are replacing the daycare. Um, again, my. Like, not not a concern, but um something I was focused on with the hours of operation on the first application. But uh they laid those out clearly. No issue whatsoever. Um, I I think this is a really good project for the space. And uh no issues or red flags whatsoever.
Uh, Mark?
Yeah, uh, like Brad, I likewise had a concern that we were going to have uh. Dying animals paraded in front of little kids and shocked them, whatever. Uh, the fact that it's replacing it, yes, is a. Is a good thing. Um, and uh she seems very professional in her office and very controlled in what she's going to do. And organized in her presentation, um, so I think it'll be a well-run operation.
And I would say that I was happy to see that there'll be no overnight. Um, pets there, even the post-surgery, so it sounds like it's a very minimal practice. So it shouldn't have much, any disruption to the area.
Yeah, man, I I guess I I would say I I agree. Um, I think this type of business operating during. You know, a a normal course of the day. Um, you know, the fact that it's, you know, say fifteen or twenty patients throughout the day, there's no overnight stay. Um, it seems like, you know, the the chemical list is long, but. Um, you know. It's. I don't think there's really any concern from us, given the the. The the stuff that's been put in place, whether it's the lock boxes, the cabinets. Um, everything else, just in terms of the the way the business is going to be run. Um, so I I don't really see a concern uh with this, given the space. Um, I don't know if if anyone else has any other. Uh, friend?
Just one thing, only because um somebody did actually ask, and I had put it as one of my questions about what is a companion pet? I think I would like to see that defined as. Domestic dog, cats and pocket pets, because. I mean, interpretation is up to individuals, and I mean, my daughter would tell you her two thousand pound horse is a companion. And even though she doesn't practice in that area, should she want to expand? Should she want to take on, you know, farm animals? I mean, there are a lot of goats and sheep in the neighborhood. Are those considered companion? Um, would it be appropriate, I guess, to define what she meant by companion animal in the decision? Uh, like the what? Right, I'm not muted now, right? It flashed back and forth, sorry. Okay, like the previous um decision and Brad's comments about the hours of operations, I'm not wedded to that, but um I offered for consideration.
I guess I tried on that with the whole idea that the pets would have be arriving by car rather than trailer. Um, hopefully. So I guess nothing precludes you riding in on your pet.
I guess not.
Uh, sorry, Fran, I just want to confirm, are you? You would like to see an hours of operation? Bracket or no?
No, not hours, no, um, the defining companion pet to domesticated dogs, cats and pocket pets.
Okay. Uh, Lori?
Just to clarify, I looked up what a pocket pet is because I've never heard that before. And it says they're smaller sized animals that are usually kept in cages or aquariums. The turk term. Pocket pets usually refers to furmy furry mammals such as gerbils, guinea pigs and hamsters. I don't know if that would also include like ferrets, although they are typically in cages and. Um. You know, similar.
I assume that'd also include uh reptiles and snakes. I I I bow to your expertise in this area, Fran, since your daughter is in the uh. In that.
Oh, I mean, uh, I guess I just, if she chose to expand her practice and wanted to start providing care. To animals other than dogs, cats and pocket pets, do we want to reconsider the application as written? Um, due to the different sizes of the animals and or the nature of the animals, like I said, goats, chickens, cow. Not cows, goats, chickens, sheep, things like that. Do we want to define it or not? I mean, again. If it becomes a nuisance, they can always come back. I just didn't know whether we wanted to. Indicate what she referred to as um companion pets and what that actually meant.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, I I guess uh. I mean, I guess the size of an animal, right, would make a difference, right? If you have a. Small goat versus a small dog, is there really a difference? I don't I don't know. Um, I mean, I would. I would say, I mean. I think given the location of this. Establishment versus, say, the other one, right? This is actually a budding residential houses, right? So I would be more inclined to actually put a. Hours of operation. Bracket around this one versus, say, the last one. Um. And then. In terms of the, you know. I don't know how to define the types of animals that you would be concerned with, but.
But if we just said limited to companion pets.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
That's fine.
Right, and I and certainly as far as hours of operation because of lighting and things like that, and there are neighbors, um, even though there is a tree line. Um. There wouldn't be, I I would not be opposed to putting. Confirming what she said, her hours of operation and giving her an hour before and an hour after to open up and shut down.
Right, so I mean, I I had nine to five Monday to Friday, eight to twelve on Saturday, but. Um, and. Yeah, and even if we just, even if it was eight to eight, uh, you know, I just think like a normal sort of course of business type of. Uh, thing as opposed to two in the morning.
Correct.
So, um. So I think in addition to what is on the draft decision, sort of having the hours of operation and then the language around. Uh, companion pets. Um, are there any other issues with? The other conditions? In the the draft decision, which are. Mostly from um. Fred's groundwater letter.
I I can share my screen. I I'm I'm prepared now, if you'd like.
Uh, sure, yes, that that works.
Okay, so. Uh. Here we go. So once again, they're asking for the waiver. Uh, the conditions that I wrote in. Uh, had to do with the list that she provided as exhibit A. Uh, but of course, we will get an updated exhibit A. Uh, from Fred. Uh, which removes the. The uh tied liquid. Uh, it does specify the various uh containment cabinets. Uh, they were specified in her submittal. I included the language saying that there shall be no flushing of toxic or hazardous uh chemicals. Right now it's a septic, but I included sewer in case at some point. It's added to the sewer system. On an annual basis, she shall demonstrate to the building department and the board of health. Uh, compliance with the storage. Uh, requirement. And then referenced the uh septic system expansion. Case, case number thirteen ten. Uh, and specified that the septic loading table had to be updated. Uh, to reflect the new information. And then uh submission of an as-built plan. Which would verify that the cabinets were actually installed where they were proposed to be installed. So of course I will add the conditions that we just talked about. Um, you want me to specify the hours of operation as eight A M to eight P M, Monday through Friday. And then seven A M to one P M on Saturday, is that correct? And then you also want a condition. Uh, that specifies companion pets as being the only patients. Um, and another condition that I was thinking of including. Based on the conversation was specifying that there shall be no overnight stays for patients.
Yep.
Anything else you'd like me to add? No?
That's great. Thanks, Lori. That's awesome.
Uh, yeah, I I think that works. I I don't have any issues with um. The conditions and then the additional ones that you you mentioned. Um, does anyone else on the board have any? Other? Comments? Please just shout it out. Can't really see anyone raising their hand.
And I added this uh waiver, so that's the one that we referenced previously, looking for the. Specific language for the motion.
Okay. So I guess uh similar to the last case, we'll have to have two separate. One for the waiver and then one for the. Um, case. Itself. Yeah, uh. Sorry, Mark, go ahead.
Okay, I move that we approve the waiver from the uh as put into the condition. Without necessarily reading it.
Second.
Okay, Mark made a motion to approve the waiver, uh, Brad seconded. Uh, Mark?
I.
Brad?
I.
Uh, Fran?
Hi.
Uh, Jeff Grabowski?
I.
And I am an I as well.
Just to make it easy for you folks, when you make the other motion having to do with the decision, the language you need is all in this paragraph. Subject to conditions, uh. The new conditions, so it's A through E plus three new conditions, so what's that? E, F. G, H, so the conditions A through H.
So it's hours of operation, companion animals, and then. Um.
No overnight stays.
But. Um, does anyone want to take a? Sure, uh, Fran?
I move that we grant the special permit and special permit with site plan approval. As as submitted with conditions A through H on the draft decision provided by town planner.
Um, just one more special permit, and that is the special permit for groundwater protection overlay district.
I apologize.
Special permits and one site plan review.
Grant a special permit, special permit with site plan approval and special permit per groundwater protection overlay district.
Second.
Okay, uh, so Fran made a motion with the conditions, plus the three additional, Brad seconded. Um, Fran?
Hi.
Brad?
I.
Mark?
I.
Uh, Jeff G?
I.
And I'm an I as well. Okay. Thank you, Laura. Um, appreciate the draft decisions. I think those are. Helpful, very helpful, at least for me. So, thank you very much. Alright, so next up on the agenda is uh consideration of minutes from the November twenty second twenty twenty-two meeting. Has anyone had a chance to read over the minutes and provide any comments or feedback? Was there any comments or feedback?
And I have no issues with them, I think we should approve them.
Is that a motion, Mark?
Um, well, I just uh put up there for general discussion. Wants to bring up any objections, but if not, then I'll move it toward a motion that we accept the minutes for November. For November twenty twenty-two's meeting. for November twenty-twenty-two's meeting.
Second.
Okay, Mark made a motion, Brad seconded. Uh, Mark?
Aye.
Brad?
Aye.
Uh, Fran?
Aye.
Uh, and then I'm an I, and then um, Jeff Leland?
I'm an I.
Okay. Thank you. Um, all right, so next on the agenda is just a discussion of planning boards proposing amendments of the zoning map and propose amendments to the zoning bylaws. So I had this added, um, probably last week, so we had a meeting with the planning board, January third. I think a couple of members on the board were not present at that meeting, um. So I don't know if everyone has a list of the February seventh, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three draft. Um, but I figure, you know, if anyone has any questions or comments that they want to discuss, follow-ups as such, um, you know, we can have that discussion now, if anyone wants to sort of go into, I, I actually have a couple of questions, I just want to confirm a couple of things, but um, does anyone, I, I guess Lori, just to confirm the, the process going forward from here. Um, so is the, the next planning board meeting is February seventh, and that will be a public hearing? And they will basically be presenting this sort of draft of all the fifteen uh, zoning amendments. Is that correct?
That's correct. So this version dated two-seven-twenty-three includes the uh, comments that were received last week from town council. So Chris, I had no issue with any of this feedback, so I just went ahead and accepted it all uh, directly into the text. Uh, so that is the working version as of this date.
Okay, great. Um, so I guess I, I don't know what any, anyone else wants to do, if you, I mean, if you want to go through each of the, in, in, every individual bylaw, um, we can do that, or if anyone has any specific questions about, I do want to follow up on uh, two of them, so I guess I'll just go first, so um, with regards to the groundwater, and I think, Mark, you had brought this up at the last meeting. So it is the, the groundwater protection overlay district, sort of the, the lot sizes and stuff. Um, I think it's the zoning bylaw, section seven dash oh-seven, oh-one-oh. Um, basically just, um, you know, I, I think the idea, we're sort of on the same page, I just want to confirm certain thought process, right?
Yep.
So if you have a, a property that is in groundwater one, right, the minimum lot size is eighty thousand square feet. Um, and if you have a residential property in groundwater two, the minimum lot size is forty thousand square feet, right? And so if you are trying to build a house in which groundwater two, in which the property exists in groundwater one and groundwater two, right? If the building is being built on groundwater two, it can only have that forty thousand square feet, right, within groundwater two, and cannot go to groundwater one to get any of that forty thousand square feet.
That is correct.
That is correct.
And then if this uh, building sort of goes over both lines, you default to the more restrictive lot. So if the building is in both groundwater one and groundwater two, right? We would then require eighty thousand square feet for the property. And in that case, you need eighty thousand square feet in just groundwater one property.
No?
No.
In that case, you can include the uh, lot area that's in groundwater two, because you're going with the more restrictive eighty thousand square feet.
Okay.
So the eighty thousand square feet can be in area one, and it can be in area two in circumstances where the building straddles the two.
Right. Okay.
That was my understanding as well.
All right, great, um. Does anyone else have any other questions or comments about either that bylaw or any other of the bylaws that they want to bring up now? And obviously, we, we can all attend sort of a planning board meeting on the seventh as well, Mark?
Uh, just, um, Lori, has there been any objections to the expansion of the uh, uh, commercial district for the uh, uh, the White Cliffs? Has any of the abutters um, voiced any opinion that you know about that?
No, we have had some questions, so of course, uh, we do have um, two proposals that the White Cliffs Committee is uh, reviewing at this time. One of them is an affordable housing proposal. If that ends up being the prevailing proposal, then uh, it doesn't matter what the zoning is, because uh, as you know, uh, they would come for a comprehensive permit, so they would get relief from all zoning. But if it ends up being a business scenario, um, then that is the alternative proposal. Uh, then this zoning change would be necessary in order for them to proceed with their project.
Uh-huh. Okay. Um, thanks, Mark, and thank you, Lori, um. I guess, does anyone else have any other, either questions or comments or things that they would like to bring up in today's meeting? Um, with regards to any of the planning board amendments?
I have nothing.
Nothing, okay. Um, anyone else? No?
Uh, I, I guess, quick comment or quick question uh, for you, Lori, so based on all these boards um, that you meet with, and, and actually Fred and, and Bob as well, we, it's, what kind of feedback at a high level are you also hearing about these uh, proposed changes? Is there a lot of pushback? Are we all on the same page, or is it kind of all over the place, don't mind?
I'm really the only one that seems to be controversial from my perspective. Well, we did have a little bit of discussion about the uh, elimination of um, the residential use uh, when it's affiliated with an industrial project. There was a, I think actually Fran, you questioned that one. Um, and then the other one is the elimination of the groundwater advisory committee. So there's been a lot of discussion. I know the various uh, boards that contribute to, contribute members to that committee. Uh, I believe all of them have discussed it at their regularly scheduled meetings. So I do anticipate that we will get some feedback at the public hearing on February seventh um, regarding how they feel about the elimination of that committee.
Thanks, Lori.
Um, okay. Uh, if no one has anything else, um, uh, so the next ZBA meeting is the twenty-eighth of February. Lori, is that right? That's correct?
That is correct.
And then there, I think I saw, is there only one case for uh, signs at, um?
We did just receive, yeah, we did just receive a uh, more significant filing. Uh, so that is an expansion, uh, so it's a sizable addition to an existing building. Um, so of course, you'll be getting a review letter from me on that, and I'm sure Fred will also provide a review letter, um, that might be a multi-night public hearing, I'm not sure at this point, because I haven't looked through the application yet.
You know, with the addresses or?
Oh, boy, um.
Four fifty-five Whitney?
Thank you, that's it.
Sorry.
Fifty-five Whitney? Four fifty-five.
Four fifty-five, okay.
Okay, uh, all right, so are there, is there any other business that uh, anyone has to bring up? Otherwise, I will send a motion to adjourn.
Uh, just before, uh,
Yep.
Remember, if you're available on Thursday night, um, we're having the public meeting to uh, co- conversation with the public about the downtown revitalization, and we're looking for input from everyone out there. So if you're available, it's at the library at the high school at six-thirty, six o'clock.
Six-thirty, six-thirty on Thursday night. And we will be serving light refreshments, so hopefully we'll be able to grab some more people, I know it's
And it's interactive, it's interactive, like if you participated in the master plan um, steering committee, where they had the, the boards up with pictures, and you get to vote on what you would like to see. It's kind of like if you were, you know, dreaming up what you would like to see, this is your opportunity to weigh in on it, so the more, the merrier.
That's to save free food and drink.
So hope to see you all there.
I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
Uh, all right, so Jeff made a motion to adjourn, Fran seconded. Um, Jeff?
Aye.
Fran?
Aye.
Brad?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
And I'm an I as well. All right, thank you, everyone, I'll see you everyone.